Mama moi c'est mon père Égoïste, c'est mon père Mama moi c'est mon père C'est mon père, Mama Éga m'arrive, éga t'es comme Comme le bébé là, comme un gosse Éga m'a vu, éga m'a vu M'a vu, éga m'a vu Éga moi, éga moi, éga moi Tu viens de te la, éga m'as vu Éga moi, moi, éga moi Éga le bébé, éga moi Toi, 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 toi Toi, 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 tu vas aller On est même pas du tout normal Il fait bien pour les gens Éga moi, moi, éga moi Tu viens de te la, oh, 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 oh Tu viens de te la, oh, 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 oh Éga moi, moi, éga moi Éga moi, moi, éga moi Tu viens de te la, oh, 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 oh Tu viens de te la, oh, 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 oh Éga moi, moi, éga moi Éga Éga moi Mama, tu as eu Éga moi, moi, éga moi Éga moi, éga moi Éga moi Éga moi Mama Éga moi Éga moi Éga moi Éga moi Mama Éga moi Éga moi Éga moi Éga moi So let's go I don't know I know where you go There is a city, a lucky lay, a love Everything is a love, everything is a love Tell me, I see See, come on Éga moi See, moi, moi, moi Éga moi, let me tell you Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi Éga moi Éga I don't know Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh
You can have stage to interview
I can't do that
Okay, can I make you What is that
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know
Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh Éga moi, moi, oh, oh
It's a new season We are having leadership in our social contract In our local testing rooms In our traditional institutions need to take a new form Leadership is not about carrying what is this Leadership is not about carrying for every year's sake
Please allow, please allow I, I do have something to tell everyone Please
Yes, I do think my mind I think my body could do that I have been
I never said that I'm a king of the world But leadership is everyone Leadership is about Leadership is everyone This is a new form If everyone was standing right in the space, it's sure we are empty We need to understand leadership In our special, overall, research Leadership in our household systems Leadership in our cultural institutions Leadership in our global space To know is true or over for everybody responsible Leadership is the whole west coast of people Leadership is all about turning of things at the well of heart Leadership is all about kindness Leadership is all about watching a show with several origin Leadership is my vision Leadership is our mission Leadership is about being respectful Leadership is about belonging, respect Leadership is all about informing And I tell you And my greatest strength of leaders, we are the first of all this We are in a league of this system We are your rights Who are we, and we can give it We are your rights, we are most popular, most respected Most important And that is what we have to keep our group active People group People group is a member Of the best place in the world People group People group is the top of people's level People group are the seat of The best So far, veterans of them Who are ready for the top of the world, they are We need to say, but for now I will not pass out those four But today, so much is given Today, so much is given, everybody can get a music It's a new beast, new challenge Last year, our own Our radio station So many people Everyone, all this is going along in good business New beast, new radio station You want them I want them I want them to say But if the people Can achieve the people that they're following If we can help them and help them I will tell you In an obvious Everyone will be there That's a special point For enough in person I want you to hear this Everyone will be there, that's a special point For enough, make up your eyes for this Everyone will be afraid New people have the fault Letting test, letting test the wrong person I tell you I always say, but this is our one thing, our equal to this The public's sense of race When the world's fair and real of our history Which the people We are ready and ready for From Ebemah We are going to buy one In all the communities, we are going to have, at least forty, we are going to buy one, that's my wish
Principal of Ebemah Secondary School Is a person of Pastor Kevin Chinedu Azogu Honorable A speech presented by the principal of Ebemah Secondary School To highlight the challenges facing the school During a town hall meeting of Ebemah Tink Tang Group Voting at Okuzi Civic Center On 30th of December 2023 All protocols duly observed I wish to use this opportunity To first of all Express my gratitude to the members Of Ebemah Tink Tang Group For giving me fees To invite me to present a speech On the challenges facing Ebemah Secondary School, Ebemah In this special event Of the American Town Hall Meeting Voting today at Okuzi Civic Center This is indeed a welcome development As it will afford noble sons and daughters of Ebemah The opportunity to join us In shaping a brighter future for the school It will be fortunate to mention At this juncture That the school recently benefited from engineer Ifakatuku Muakere's self-sponsored water scheme To provide portable drinking water For staff and students of the college Though, there is no affordable source of electricity provided To power it Hence, we'll see it as an imminent challenge Another great challenge Facing the school presently is dilapidated structures The main twelve classroom upstairs Which was recently refurbished And re-roofed with some standard sheets Is now an eyesore As the roof cannot withstand the weather conditions Other classroom blocks, laboratories And technical workshop are in the safe path condition And unsafe for academic activities In fact, the school is presently managing the school hall And former G.I.A.S. dormitory Which we are not fully completed as classrooms Meanwhile, there are no offices for the principal and staff There is also the need to improve teaching and learning in the school By improving the post-staff strength, which stands now at five While we continue to press on the government For the posting of more teachers The school can be helped With the services of youth corps members And community-sponsored teachers It is pathetic to note That the school has not held their annual inter-house sports competition For more than one decade Due to no availability of sports activities Sports facilities However, it is my strong desire to organize one This academic session If the facilities are made available Similarly, there is no functional library in the school Even some agricultural equipment supplied to the school Are being underutilized for lack of acreage stocks From the foregoing, it can be seen That the challenges facing the school are enormous But are still surmountable Idea for, once more Thank the members of Ebemah Tink Tang Group For this wonderful initiative And implore all and sundry To do all within our reach To ensure that we rescue the great institution From imminent collapse Thanks Pastor Chinedu Kevin Azogu Hallelujah
Okay, thank you That's a speech from the principal Though heavily represented by one of his team of studies I think we've had from the horse's mouth Sorry, I'm not on your policy horse We've had from the horse's mouth and I believe that before the end of this meeting today I believe mirages of solutions Will emanate from Ebemah people Thank you
Yes, well, the wonderful principal was presenting The through picture of Ebemah Secondary School Some dignitaries walked in, I can notice Dr. Linus of Alubi Dr. Linus, you're welcome I see, notice Then the guests from the table community Chief Chinedu Gorgi Amande Adezoo Leonard Zidi Amko Please touch your hands for them Appreciate our brothers Uchen Dugue Amko I hope, Dr. Alub Alub, sir I hope you are ready If you are ready I don't have anything to contribute than to hand over the microphone You've had from the horse Justify the horse
And then this time on the visiting protocols And discuss the issue that has been raised Or the issue concerning The educational challenges As it affects the Ebemah people We have heard the principal have mentioned so many challenges facing this school But I want to look at it from a general perspective But I want to see it as a second missionary journey This happened in 1992 When Professor Gabriel Lesbiki was made a master fellow Of the University of Boston The Ebemah Board organized A reception for him Telling, delivering a proposal on the challenges of education challenges in Ebemah And that hosted the Ebemah people going to universities He helped in admitting a lot of Ebemah people And then giving them jobs And I hope that this gathering Will also, at the end of this exercise Maternovski too People getting admissions People also getting jobs in different areas in the educational sector I want to look at the issues that have been raised I can, I will classify them into three broad categories One is the parental background as it affects the challenges In educational pursuits in Ebemah Secondly, I will look at also the third room as a factor That has mitigated against or has facilitated the educational Pursuits of Ebemah youths Thirdly, I will look at developmental factors My thoughts, discussions, we itemize them Individually, while I look at the broad aspect of it If you look at the educational background of the parents Or the parental background You are going to look at them at educational level of the parents You are also going to look at them at the socioeconomic level of the parents And this will also affect the attendance Or the pursuit of education of the youths in different categories If you look at the third room You find out also that the third room also affects The educational pursuits of our children You can see that nowadays, the children look at education as a scam Which is not so I used to address my children when we went, when we go for army prayers That you are looking at The kingdom of God as the first kingdom The next kingdom is the kingdom of education That's my address to them And they believe that, that while they are pursuing the kingdom of God They also pursue the kingdom of education Whether it affords them the opportunity to get, get some employment or not But it's a kingdom that has to be achieved Then the next is the third room Which I have said has also looked at education Because people come out of their educational pursuits And do what they call their who now, and make money And so they see that it's a way of achieving But education is not naturally for acquiring wealth But it trains you And more in your character into being a normal, a better person in the future Then if you look at developmental factors, developmental factor is broad Look at Nigeria as a whole Where that when you finish your, as a graduate, you have the planning opportunities As a graduate, you become a taxi driver As a graduate, you don't have any opportunity at all You look at it at that level You also look at it from our local level Where the people after going to university Come back to join them in doing voluntary business For make money So if you look at these three factors They are factors that are very affecting the economic development of our nation, of our Ebemah people Now, if you look at the Ebemah secondary school and the two secondary schools we have Ebemah grade school, which I taught for so many years before I left here You find out that many things are at both points Just because of these three factors that have affected them And I pray that at the end of this exercise The Tink Tang Will also do better than what happened in 1992 When Professor Lesbiki was delivered such lectures That prompted the mobilization to come and to universities And I think that our efforts here shall never be in waste May God help us And lead our children to know that after the kingdom of God The next kingdom is the kingdom of academics Thank you and God bless you
You can do better than that, ah, Nico You can do better than that Ah, Nico Ah, Nico, I'm from Roger, but I'm I'm a, I'm a, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger So I'm a man, but I'm a cat, okay, love, please, love, love, I'm a Roger Why would ask the principal of Ebemah Grade School to join us here Nico The prince of Mufa, the oldest Ah, ah, dog Eh, I'm a Roger, eh, eh Pastor, Nico, Roger, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger Mufa is already there, Nico I'm a Roger, a lot Principal of Ebemah Grade School just get ready to join us Can I meet you, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger My father Meanwhile, I want to recognize The representative Of former Inspector General of Police Our own chief, Mike Okiro In the presence of Uche Okiro Which if you are here, you can stand for the recognition and join us at the high table I'm looking at the acar Yes, if I can, I'm going to make a name And if I believe you, my job is done Yes, you can see the face That is Okiro The representative of the former Inspector General of Police Ebemah born Mike Okiro His son is here He's holding proof of the father The father is on the way You can clap for the young man, it's not easy Yes, maybe I'll take, take a picture, take a picture, maybe also, yeah, question, eh, eh Go and give me the fitting sitting place for this occasion Till you will see the father Ah, ah, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger They are all got I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger, eh, eh, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger, I'm never there in the high table And also, I bet, Anthony K. Chukwu is on the way I just got the signal, saying some minutes time he will be here with us Our reference, Jesse, um, is on the way also, in his family Yes Doctor Mike Okiro You are welcome, you are welcome Ah, ah, only I just mentioned Eh, eh, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger Eh, eh, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger Yes Eh, eh, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger What do you mean, the land What's
I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger My baby Eh, eh, eh I'm a doctor, I'm a doctor I'm a second general of Ebemah Heights and professionals And Nico, I'm a Roger Eh, this is our contest of general That will be, uh, will be, will be working again, uh, contest of general
I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger Look at I'm eh Here, here, here I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger One day, one day, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger And you know the
Eh, eh, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger
One day, eh, eh, eh I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger Eh, eh, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I have nothing over Don't care, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger We're still over, I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, eh Everybody, ready, oh Everybody, ready, eh, eh, eh Ready Mine, uh, for question, uh, for you Oh, you know, eh, mine, eh, mine, eh, eh For you Oh, here, eh Uh You can I'm a Roger, I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, eh, eh I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, eh, eh I'm a Roger I'm a Roger, eh I'm a Roger, eh I'm a Roger
I'm a 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 amen. Amen. I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a no, eh, I'm a okay, Papa. I'm a 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 because I'm a but I'm a 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 I think that is right. Thanks, everyone, everyone. I just want to remind you, each test is a break out of the everyone, everyone. Ah, they are, okay, Nico, Nico, let me introduce you, sorry. We have in our presence, honorable, graceful engineer, the PDP chairman for Neoka. People, I'm a please, sir, I'm a I'm a everyone, everyone. Nico, eh, eh. I'm a 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 please, I want to, eh, editor editor, I swear editor, don't edit this part off. Because it is also teaching for children, don't edit it off, thank you. I'm a I'm a sorry, she called me, I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a and we'll call these people, they're watching, they're doing that before we continue. Eh, eh, thank you very much, we know that culture is dynamic. I'm a 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 uh-huh. Yeah, meanwhile, meanwhile. Meanwhile, Nico, I'm a please, let me go to John. The principal of Ebeema Grade School should join us here. Please, just a problem, let me bring the restricted ones and for all. I'm a please, please. It's eh, I'm a 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 and eh, I'm a everyone, I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a it is acceptable. And on that basis, how many people can I go and I go? I die, I die. Thank you, sir. Ah, he, eh, everyone, I'm a I'm a la, the old man, he actually, I'm a 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 so principal of Ebeema Grade School, eh, eh? Eh, principal of Ebeema Grade School, eh? Can you go, eh, give a challenge, challenge? By Barista, I'm a I know. Who are you, eh? I challenge you, let's move on, eh? There's no time. We have other programs for the day. Okay, which one about the car, eh? Eh, I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a so I was inviting Barista Anointing, each other. The children, eh, at this place. Let us handle all the academic issues together. Barista Anointing, each other. Allah, who are they, eh? But that's a, a young pretty lady. Plus, our barista, barista, eh? Nico, I am a very bright comrade Michael Ibo, Michael Ibo, that is President, National Union of River State Students. Are you? I'm a no, thank you, welcome. Only for any, eh? You don't need to look hard, you don't judge a book by its cover. Yes. So, here we have three issues here. We have the guitar issue, we have student issue. We have personalities that are threatening our academic problems with special fires. On Ebeema Secondary School, eh, I'm a on Ebeema Grade School, I'm a when you ah, ah, Doctor Ward, I'm handing back the microphone. Please, pardon. And I think I have a little, put a broad spectrum to this topic. And I want to hand over to my fellow discussants to look at it from what the principal has just itemized, so that we can move forward. I call on Monday. Hello, eh, please, before you call on Monday, just don't bother. We want to hear from Anointing each other. And after that, we hear from you, Ibo, then we can treat it simultaneously.
Good afternoon, Michael. Eh, eh. Um, it's a great privilege to be here today. I feel honored to my leaders and my community for helping me grow and for giving me this path, the platform to be on the spotlight. It's a privilege and very grateful, thank you, Michael. Eh, eh. I mean, that's with presenting the challenges facing the Ebeema girl child and proposing a solution to the challenges. I have identified three key issues and outlined the solutions and benefits. First, let's define who a girl child is. A girl child is a young female, a young female child. I'll dive right into the challenges. Challenge one, we have the high number of out of school girls. The number of girls in school today, they are very low compared to that of the boy child. When we ask why? That's it, that we have early marriages, early pregnancy, and then lack of funding for students. The solution to this, we need a scholarship scheme for girls who want to study but have lack of financial support. This will encourage our girls to strive for excellence and participate in educational activities which will put Ebeema in a positive spotlight. I know that many of us here, as an individual, we've been sponsoring girls and the boy child under a scholarship program with our personal capacity. Eh, not to mention a few, eh, Dr. Nelson de Berry, eh, Sir Doctor Mike Okiro. This and many others have been sponsoring individuals on their own capacity, even the Ebeema National Education Foundation. Because I believe that as an Ebeema people, if we can organize a scheme for the girl child, we say every year annually, there is a scholarship for girls, specifically for girls. This will help us encourage younger girls that you can actually get this dream of yours instead of killing that deal due to financial support. Another solution is to provide skill empowerment scheme for those who are not academically inclined. This will reduce the rate of persecution in our society. You will be able to meet today that not everybody wants to go to the forefront of the university. Some persons are business oriented. Not everybody wants to go and sit there in a classroom and learn ABCD one to three. So, we are, I, I am proposing that this challenge, this challenge of pro, of proposing that skill empowerment should be made available. When we are also making available scholarship schemes, we should often have skilled acquisition program, not a one-day event that will gather students, teach them how to make so or that. It should be like a, a, a month program, not a one-day event. I feel personally that a one-day skill acquisition program has little or no impact on the individual. Challenge two, small business grants to support startups. Many of us are into business, many of the girls, they're into business, but no sufficient support for the business to grow. So if we can have a business support, business grant for the girl child, for instance, if fifteen naira can be made available, okay, let me use five hundred. If five hundred naira can be made available for the girl child annually, say this is the amount, one person take fifteen naira, the other fifteen naira, and then at the end of the year, you should return this amount without interest, zero interest, but put this into your business and allow it to grow. And then, let's see how you can go further. We need small business grant to support young females in tapeworms. This will help them become successful and contribute to the growth of our community. Challenge three, we have the insufficient inclusion of girls in community decision-making process. I cannot over emphasize on this particular challenge that the girl child is facing. You cannot expect the girl child to grow without giving them the opportunity to come and make known their own interests, their own problems. For instance, in this occasion, something like this, the girl child should be made available to take part in the process. I know there are some committees in this event, but I cannot say for sure if a girl child was given the platform to also contribute her quota. So if this can be made available, the girl child will come in to also contribute their quota. So I'd like to challenge, we propose that when committees or groups are established, the most important event of Ebeema, it should involve girls from the land. This approach will help our girls try and actively contribute to the growth and development of our community. Challenge one, high school, high number of girls out of school. Challenge two, small business grant to support startups. And challenge three, insufficient inclusion of girls in community decision process. I believe that if these three challenges are tackled, the girl child will be able to grow and also contribute their quota to the development of Ebeema. Thank you and God bless you.
That's a good one, you can do better than that, please, please. While eh, the girl child director in Ebeema was busy talking to us, a national figure in Ebeema, coming. Woman officially, welcome Reverend Doctor Jesse Omebu. You can appreciate him better. Reverend Mado, eh, 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 eh. Well, we just have from outside, China is the record. So please, let us hear evenly from you are now the national chairman of hello? Please present your case.
Love everyone. Eh, the chairman of the as everyone said, yeah, I, eh, eh, I am Michael AJ Ibo. I am from another community. I am the president of the National Union of River States. I have been very much appreciative to the organizers of this very important event, so I'm happy to be here, thank you all. Ebeema students has a whole lot of challenges. We have a whole, a whole lot of challenges facing our students. And one of the ways for us And one of the ways for us to tackle some of these challenges is through this medium that we have gathered to discuss some of these challenges. Every, every society has these challenges, some are peculiar and some are also general. And I'm also happy that we have taken it upon ourselves to chart a report for our people. In the course of me coming here to speak on the challenges facing ABMA students, I was able to interface with some of our students in various institutions. And I was able to discover some of the challenges which, uh, which are, one, poor career planning, two, prepared in our modern society. So let me go further to the next, who are with the influence of internet fraud. I also have to use this real life instance to draw analogy from this. You know, while I, as a student of economics, I have a friend, he's from, he's from one of the communities here. He's also studying economics, but he's into internet fraud. Because of, he finally very difficult to focus on his studies. So what, what he does is that he gives me money to do his assignments. You know, as a student, you always need of money. So I do assignment, I take five thousand from him, so that's I take ten thousand. It also helps me to buy textbooks and also direct out an auto to myself. So this is a very big challenge that our students are facing. As a student, you cannot focus to study your books when you have your attention or focus on how to make money on, to, to fraud, fraudulent means. So, uh, it's a very big challenge that we must look into. Another problem, though, one of the principal identified this, this has to do with our secondary schools and our primary schools, which is infrastructure deficiency. So, uh, most of our students, if you go to the primary secondary schools, their structures are very decayed, outdated. You see students sitting on the floor learning, which affects their overall performance and their studies. Then another one, which is a very big challenge, financial constraint. As a young person, I, I lost my father at a time when I didn't think the most. But I had, uh, well, individuals who was, who has the interest of ABMA at heart. I want to say very big thank you to Reverend Dr. J C Omegu and my uncle, Sylvester Ibo, who through their philanthropic gestures are able to stand here addressing people today. Without their intervention, I wouldn't have been able to make it, despite being a young guy with so much potential. So I want to say very big thank you to them. That is a very big challenge our students are facing. So I made a survey, I had to interface with the students at River State University, Ignacio Saadjo, they were at, uh, Imo State and other nearby institutions, because I had to speak to them directly. They told me they have faced a lot of challenges. I, I am sorry that I have this person experiences and I know how it feels to go to school without help, to go to school without having a partner that can give you money for textbook without you thinking so much about it. So one of the ways to which we can, uh, solve or mitigate some of these challenges is one, organize career workshops to address the number one challenge, which is poor career planning. As a president of River State, uh, students, my administration, we are planning on carrying out career workshop and who they think has been approved by the management of the school. And this is what I want us to replicate here in Ebema. Because for Ebema to grow, we have to make sure we have people who are well educated, people who are well studied, and people who are well grounded in whichever course they choose to study. So for us to achieve this, we have to, once they want organized career workshop, we have to make it a month, a yearly, uh, routine. We are second, young secondary school leaders are gathered in a platform like this, couple weeks on the project. We are, we are going to invite the source persons to address them on their, on the challenges they are going to face in their respective career, the things involved to skate through. Then the influence of. The influence of, um, internet fraud. One of the ways to mitigate the negative influence of internet fraud is to organize awareness campaigns emphasizing legal and academic precautions, establish mentorship programs where successful professionals share experiences emphasizing the value of education and legitimate, legitimate base of success. So, uh, in the area of financial constraints, I want to, uh, because we are to discuss the challenges and also to provide suitable solutions. One of the ways to which we can solve the problem of financial constraint or financial challenges of our students is to, one, raise an education trust fund. Where we are going to, where our, um, where respected and hiding place needs are to make contributions for us to help our students in that, um, regard. And again, one of the ways to do it is to, one, because we have, in each university, we have, uh, presidents of ABMA students in various institutions that helps to contain the cares of these students. So the ways to which we can solve it very easily is to involve them, set up a scholarship board that comprises of community leaders, community traditional rulers, and hiding place individuals coupled with these presidents in various institutions. I think this is a way to get into the writing with the students. Before I drop the mic, I would love to leave us with this very, very vital quote that has to do with the importance of supporting students. At first, empowering students through education is like planting seeds of wisdom that will blossom into a garden of success. Supporting and uplifting students in their educational journey plays a foundation for brighter future. Thank you all, and may you all remain blessed.
Applauding, applauding. I'm not. I'm not surprised he spoke with such eloquence. It's an ABMA salt, it's a product of ABMA land and greatness flows in every ABMA salt. Please, can you increase the volume a bit? Thank you. Sure, thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. Someone said, if your plan is for a year, plant rice. If it's for ten, if it's for ten years, plant a tree. But if your plan is for the future, educate a child. No matter what we do in ABMA land, we cannot relegate education of our young ones to the background. Thank you, Mr. Comrade Michael Ibo. Thank you for being here today. Okay, the panelist, once again, over to you. Thank you. Shall we please applaud the panelist as a diplomat? Because the panel, you know, they were, I can't, I can't. We have a, please, try your best to prove. Eh, 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 eh. I found the evangelism on the city. I love all the challenges must run our school. And I can continue from who's our team lead, Dr. Wadu Sogo. First and foremost, I want to make this statement by a wise man. He said, education for all is the responsibility of all. Education for all is the responsibility of all. Having said that, our principal, one of our principals from Ebema Grammar School, Opokofia, have mentioned some challenges in their school. Our national leader, Ebema Students Union, have also mentioned some challenges in our schools and in our students. Our Ebema girl child have mentioned some challenges in our girl child. I want to briefly continue from where my team leads, start, Dr. Wadu. One of the challenges they mentioned is post-studying trends. Delebatative school structure, non-functional library, and lack of sports facilities. One, it's post and staff strength. I say we can do something with regards to this. The ABMA students in higher institution, not their graduates, can organize themselves as we did early nineties during holidays to organize lectures for the students in all the schools. Next one, number two, we can engage the services of U-COPAS by going to the coordinators of National Union, the U-COPAS, and then let them know or ask for more teachers appointed in all our schools. We can take care of the post-studying trends. Again, by the grace of God, I want the Honorable Minister and Honorable Commissioner for Education, River State. We can go to the post-studying schools board and ask for more teachers to be posted to our schools. Having said that, I will now go straight to the delebatative school structures. ABMA people, I want to say that we shall not be waiting for government to do everything. We have ABMA people that can do something in all those schools, just something, no matter how small. All our men and women that are willing to do one or the other can look for, even the seats, make cheers for the school, look for area they can just work upon and that will take care of delebatative school structures. The number three, non-functional libraries and lack of sports, which the principal mentioned. To this regard, our sons and daughters, which we know we have capable hands in ABMA, in River State and Imo State, they can also combine or do something by buying books and buying sports facilities for all the schools that can take care of that. And so, I will now stop by mentioning, also again, that we shall not be waiting for government to come and do all these things for our schools. Because the schools are just for ABMA people. It is our sons and daughters that are in the school. And I repeat, that education for all is the responsibility of all. You, I can do something. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I want to recognize the presence of Joe Oneyeva. All the way from Abuja is here. Eh, ladies, the discussers, we come, eh, when I say I'm a party, eh, oh, no, no. Who the Bible will name, oh, no, no, sir. Stay here. Eh, we take it to the church, just go straight to the church, we have a lot of issues. Eh, we come, we. I love it. Uh, God, mercy, sorry, sorry, just give us three minutes. Let us, let us, let us, let us show with, provide to our others. Yes, Doctor Sere.
I will be here in some occasion to speak English, but I think the best way is to communicate in another language. So the first challenge and solution I'm providing is that, first of all, as a student in higher institution, I can go and learn Lama Hadid, but what more about the understanding of it? If you're going in a way for Jesus, if you agree with the way for Jesus. If you have the care of God, this time is your limit. Your lifestyle will be different, your doing will be different, your professional pursuit, your lifestyle will be different. You will be studios, you will be more committed to the academics. And I bet you, when they will see you, they will lend assistance where you need it. Am I on the right side? Okay. If also, the goal of procrastination, a student or a girl child should set a goal for him or herself. Do not procrastinate. As a student, start from the one, to study your book. Start with the very first day, the next one comes to your class. As a young lady, in my area, teacher, if she is having this soon, okay, she is doing it, ah, go, ah, hi, right? She is having a big, eh, 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 night, it has a good way you. So as a young boy child, the first thing you do to yourself is to set a goal for yourself. And with that, I bet you, you're going to fly high. Secondly, I want to talk, provide solution on issue of discipline. I want to use my father as a good example. My nearest father-in-law, in a profession family, has an envelope. That envelope is an envelope that he writes your name on that envelope. As soon as you remove your chicken wire, my father brings this envelope. Each day he goes to work and has any, eh, this so-called is a job, a job. You will remove some part of that money and put it in the envelope. Our machine will work, the fire like the girl, oh, you hope that envelope, yeah, oh, yeah, so you better understand this. Are we there? So as parents, we have to set goals, financial goals for our children. As a student, you also have to set goal for yourself. As you read your book, don't just study. You have to make sure you get past with some papers. Study alongside, you go past some, pass with some papers. As a young girl, you also discipline yourself in, uh, aspect of life. Are we there? Because they don't mind me on the future. The third one is source of income. The young man has spoken challenges of students in the higher institution, oh, my goodness, I, eh, eh, Mahadu. This is true, the nice of, eh, other is the next table. Was one of the persons that gave me so much, eh, interest that I had to identify them as good. I prefer to identify the other man because of their closeness. So what I'm saying is that we should, as much as we can, have confidence in ourselves. And last thing is awareness. Our degree of awareness at all level is very low, especially in our culture. Eh, they both are smart, yeah, the children, and my, eh, they both live on, and they both. My difference that year, I chose one, I got two years ago, I don't want them. I don't want to go to the land job, eh, both are smart, and the children. And this type of awareness, the manner that I felt, all the recipe I made, my step, I did both, I asked you why. I asked you why, I asked. If I ask you why, because I, 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 eh, now I don't mind you, eh, for the family, and why you are only. What today we are, why, why, eh, because, the last, eh, that I see, eh, why? Most of the time, one, he said, who should they, what they want, eh, other, eh, who are who, we that they want to.
Applauder, 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 as you want, sir. Applauder, as you want, sir.
Please, I want to appeal to the entire ABMA kingdom. As much as you are, wherever you are, our nearest sister, that is Anointing, make mention of, eh, we, eh, women have an influence in this job making. I think we are, we are twelve percent at that level, we are grand level. We need a change, a positive change. We need to encourage our sisters. We need to encourage our daughters. And finally, in the area of, eh, non-functional library, I want to appeal to, eh, our sister and politicians in Odega and in, eh, in, eh, River State and in Forest State. The money, for, eh, for students' projects, if you channel it to education, it will help us.
Applauder, applauder, applauder.
If you channel your constituency project to library, development, acquirement of textbooks, it will be a very long way to help us. Stop fixing structures that are not used after five years. Give the structure of education. And I want to leave you, leave everyone of us with this quote. And that was said, we all must suffer one of two things. The first of discipline, the other, the first of progress. So if we discipline ourselves, we are passing two things. And if we don't discipline ourselves, surely, by our life, we are going to live in a bad, thank you.
If I still have questions, eh? We come, I want to appeal especially as, eh, this was expected according, eh, according to ABMA team, that group. Hello.
the coordinator, coordinator of Everma Tintan Group. Hello. They can, our coordinator is coming to present the role of address. Aldekele, the discussants. Eh, Mr. Coordinator, please permit the two leader to surprise, eh, the two leader, one nice surprise, eh.
You have heard it, you have seen, you have got. The only thing I want to say is that, I wish to say that each generation and generation must be adult. Everything has to discover its mission, to feel it of grace. We have seen it and understand the situation. What is the threat by you today? No longer can we say, the sky is our limit. The only limit now is the vast vision and vision. No man grows, if you see what some of the big shot you see today, or the vast, you will know that a vast pool have. I want to give just a, an example, our, our Reverend Dr. Omedu. I was in the industry with him. Omedu, he threw using typewriter machine, the type people's project, type people. And he, today, he says, eh, he says, eh, he said, eh, this one. So, and after my second year, after my second year, I lost my sponsor. I had to start and move that great. Today, I have a passion. So, there is, there is many, it's just my vision and I thank you very much. And I wish I knew to talk up and live up a tradition in Jesus. Familiars and comrades, we are headed by the eldest, or the eldest man at all levels for the administrative structure. And decisions at these levels, we are democratically taken at a general assembly at the village square, which later became town hall. This, this is a democratic administrative structure and system where elders and aides play by total rules in administration and security. At the twilight of Nigeria's colonialism, Everma was balkanized by governs' state creation and dominated two states, Imo and River States, through an immoral political tyranny with grave implications for Everma. Everma today, in the two states, constitute micro-minorities, which has impeded Everma's socioeconomic development. They're looking at the socioeconomic views, current realities of Everma. We need to realize that Everma's socioeconomic trajectory reflects a land that holds high economic potentials. By the way, in prospection and represents of glorious days of Everma, we need to know that in the early seventies and eighties, those were glorious days of Everma. When Everma Improvement Union, led by our late, was our blessed memory, our was our blessed memory, and other prominent members of this land, most of them are of blessed memories today. But that was a time when Everma recorded speeding economic and development strides. Or the time when we had the Everma Grammar School, we had the General Hospital, there were three of them in the state, in the, I mean, in River State. And Everma had the privilege, because of our leader then, for, to attract that gigantic project, which is lying waste today. And we also had several secondary schools in the other side of the divide. I've had hospitals. I've had a genital hall at Omog. Most of you are privy to it. Today, I don't know what has become of it. That was great Everma then. Then in the eighties, at this side of Everma, through the efforts of Everma Youth Association and Everma National Congress, there was tremendous progress when an MOU was divvied, that brought a lot of projects that have not been finished today. Most of the actors then, which of course, I am one of them, being the Secretary-General of Everma National Congress, in nineteen ninety-nine, that MOU, that monumental MOU was divvied. Most of the projects of it, of that MOU have not been finished. The E Y U Center, that is now Moribom Technical College, we are all in missing. So many projects. And I tell you, if not for Ranco and, eh, projects from us all, if those projects were what they ought to be today, it would be, eh, ever will be a place of glory. But Everma will rise again. Shall we say, eh? And so, we look at, you know, history is beautiful. One way to look at the past, so I will understand the present and now be able to move forward. And so, we have seen that there is great potential. But the current economic landscape of Everma does not reflect that. And Everma does not have a broad-based economic structure with resilient, robust socioeconomic processes. It has the feature of a more or less mono-product based economy with oil-related activities defining its progress. La page three, eh, 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 eh,[1268.08] And we, we recognized, uh, the fact that he had a device with us. So we also thank him for blessing our advert in the paper. On the back page, we have our coordinator, Prince O'Waki. Anywhere you see him, you will see the glass. And if he remove the glass, he'll be looking at you. Thank you very much. Make sure you have a coffee.
As a wonderful review, you can do better than that. Thank you sir. Because, because we are not doing the programs. But I think it's, uh, the right time for us to identify with the group by having access to the paper. I know I have wonderful traditional rulers here. We have this of our government here. We have this of our government here. We have the regent of Biafu here. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. So, you are welcome to Ebe Ma Community Watch. DJ, give us our Ebe Ma music. As we are waiting for dignitaries who would wish to identify with the Ebe Ma TikTok through this video. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hello, hello, yes, from the high table. Enetra Moshiina that I should entertain us a bit with jokes while we continue. Oh, very famous what Rana found Ebe Ma. What the rivers and animals cannot have a formula for naming people. But each other most part of river state. And we have a formula for naming their children. Now let's go to Okoni Axis. On everything with equate, almost all equated names go with Nda. So whatever I say, say that in an other Nda, you will get an equated name. Let's do it together. Wefu. Wefu Nda, Wene, Wene Nda, Ei, Ei, Martin Grand. Bush and tree. Demolition. Flyover. Abengola Joker, then. Eh eh, then when, but if you go to Okoniland, Odo Okonigayafa, if I go to the man tell to his first name. Just pronounce the name from the end to the beginning, you will get the son name. Now let's go. Bariko, what would the son name be? Thank you sir. Barisi, what would the son name be? Barito, what would the son name be? Barineka, what would the son name be? Baritu, what would the son name be? Bariebe Ma, what would the son name be? Ebe Ma Bari. So I said, teacher, I said, child, just watch into the class. Hello, Mr. Shedrock, my name is Bariko. I just put in my book, Son name, Bari. My name is Barisi, son name, Si, Bari. Yeah, it's no time for, there's no time for that, no time for such argument at all. And when our prof was speaking, you see some persons think it's all about the zim 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 without communicating. With, with little or no zim zim zim, prof communicated so much. Even when he was speaking, some persons behind were like, can we just, can we just repeat this lecture again? Now let me tell you something. I was going to Ukuta sometime last two weeks. Him and these small, small guys, immediately they gain admission. Especially to study linguistics, they think that's the end of the world. Immediately we got to Ukuta Lake, I try to reach Russell. Immediately we bothered a boat, one little guy, the boat refused to start. One little guy, there the old, old driver, John the man. And old man, what's happening? The man share my daughter, Candada. After so much try, the guy was like, illiterate old man, do you understand psychology? The man share, no. Do you understand histology? The man share, no. Do you understand epidemiology? The man share, no. She not ask, the man not ask stuff. My daughter, why all this G G G G G? The guy share anyway, illiterate old man, since you don't know what is, you die of illiteracy. The man kept quiet. I was sent back off Ukuta River. Him and that place, no, that happened. Even if you see church people, when they come to Ukuta River, from church members. Hello, I go from, from Ebe Ma, oh, yes, you also, then to Ukuta Lake, as I'm not go. Jesus power, super power, mommy water power, powerless power. But the bitter pepper in Washington, did I say? So immediately we go to the center, our top ruling gene, like the boat, we may go. The guy come one to the old illiterate man, Badua. Illiterate old man, what is happening? The man, but share my daughter, our engine has biology. This boat is about to sing biology. Since you don't understand swimology and escapology from crabology and crocodiology. You are going to diology with your knowledgeology because of your bad mythology. And if you come back in the next year, you understand the respetology. If you're not laughing, I will swear that I do. Yes, hello, sit sir. Don't look like you are Joe Sungana. If some persons are not laughing, especially the women. It's not that I'm not fun you, they are wearing fake foundation. If you do, Emma, if you're wearing fake foundation, immediately you smile into a crack. That is the truth. If you're wearing fake foundation, immediately you smile into a crack. But just look at, don't hear, see. Look at me, see, I'm laughing, they've been laughing, they've been smiling, up original foundation. Check your neighbor. So check your neighbor, thank you. Oh, brother, I can, brother, I can. This is writing in Ebe Ma, please. They can, I need a degree, a launch, our first newspaper. Don't forget, our professor just spoke. And it's natural, it's intellectual for a comment. On that note, while you are getting ready to pick our paper, we want to invite Dr. Nelson Ebere to come and make a comment. Mama, you want to comment or you want to protest? You want to lodge? No, please, 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 just one minute, please. Mama, God bless you. Eh eh, Piyawa, Piyawa, I need a little child. Eh eh, that's how it's supposed to be. So if you're interested in dancing with Ebe Ma TikTok, you have the newspaper, it's before you, identify, just signal, we'll give you the microphone. Dogman, I have two fifty, one million, whatever you have, feel free. Mama, madu, if, if.
I don't know, friend, no. Friend. You know, the man, no, the man. Eh, eh. You might. Oh, do it. There's the one. My name is. I'm from. Lady, who was she, I'm. Ni, I live. I'm my neighbor. Married to a mystic lover. I like what is happening now. This thing sad. If you know, I'm, I'm always pregnant. You won't hear my name, you won't hear me talking. But this thing sad. When I saw their program in my house. I went to wait. I told my husband, I will come for this program. I retired as a teacher in two thousand and fifteen as a director. Many of you don't know who I am. Many of you. Some graduates. I retired as a director. In the past, I found out that in Ebe Ma, leadership. They are not really doing it the way it's supposed to be. Because leadership is service. Leadership is service. The leadership should not be for you to come and, so people to come and serve you.
Ebe Edith. Uh, today is a very busy day. I have four different appointments. I will never be able to keep you two. Because of my busy shadow, I couldn't grant interview to this board. But all said and done, and grateful to God, we buy this gathering has come to stay. Amen. It's a gathering we have nurtured all this while to come to fusion, amen. And I believe God and trust that this will continue. I want to say one thing. The Ebe Ma problem is not lack of leadership. Ebe Ma problem is lack of followership. An inability of the few that find themselves in leadership position to know that they are just servants. The inability of the few that find themselves in leadership position to know that they are servants. I will not take much of your time today. But to have time to address them. But for this million editions, let me launch this book with a hundred and fifty thousand.
Wow, brother, I can, brother, I can, brother, I can. Oh yes, God bless you, oh yes. In December, all the more, eh, the butcher, eh, so so. Go for it. Yes. Please, before the rest says they will come, I want to invite Dr. Tony Oma to come and launch the marriage. I am the author of this picture, Atiboy. Hello, the man, yeah, good. But please. Um, editor. Yes, sir. Whenever you want to write my name on any piece I write, please highlight my name. I will do that. If you look at it, sir. The name of the author is not highlighted. Dr. Tony Oma, PhD. And if you go to last page, I also have a contribution here. So whatever I want to say has been embedded on my article on page number eight. Thank you very much and God bless all of us. How do you feel, Ebe? How do, how do? Ebe Ma man, eh, just like.
Yeah, but you have good.
Eh eh, Ebe Ma man, eh. Yes.
I will, I will help you, you have good.
We want to sustain the.
You're not so glad, you are.
You have a good.
And then I will hundred thousand, eh.
Oh. Because, because of the feeling, I am coming, I'm, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. I will three salute. Yes. Doctor, yes, I can learn now. Eh eh, Ebe Ma, I can learn more. Ebe Ma, I'm a young, I'm a raw. No, we are the man. Eh, Mama, la, oh, dear, dear. Eh, my last soul, Ebe Ma, my last wife, oh. Yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. Oh, yes, I can learn more, I can learn more, I see, I can learn. Uh, prof, I'm lawyer, I'm governor. Um, I've got a name, I can appreciate that. I'm a man, I can learn more, I'm a man. Um, if I'm sure, eh, so landy, I'm a jerk, I'm a winner, I'm okay. I'm a professional, I'm a frank. Oh, good, we fast run a district roadmap for Ebe Ma, socioeconomic and political landscape. Yeah, I'm a solo, eh. Oh, I'm a good girl, I can. My people, I'm a girl, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. Oh, good, good, the economic, the speaker, I'm a good man. In retrospect, I'm a learning, I'm a man. I'm a full Ebe Ma, I'm a American, I'm a carer. Ebe Ma, the machine, I'm a mama, la. Ebe Ma, the old, the lot. Ebe Ma, I'm a man, eh. Ebe Ma, I'm a man, I get to be free. I'm a water, I'm a man. But I see it war, it's a general. I see it, I fight, it, I fight. I see, I got it, I got it. I see, I, it's, I, it's, I, it's. I'm a full Ebe Ma, I'm a. It is a, it is a, it's a, it's a.